Okay, good evening, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. And thank you for your patience as we work through our technical issues. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated May 27, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you please read the roll call?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox, yes.
And moving on, I’d like us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I’d like to call on our new officers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting, as authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the noted items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Explanatory note regarding hearings and comments: Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency services, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we’re on to the minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular and closed-session minutes of July 27?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And now, moving on to reports. Madam Mayor?
We have many things to do tonight, most important of which is to swear and some officers of our police department. There are several things that I would talk about, about trees in Summit, other things. But I’m going to go off-script here a little bit because I think it’s really important, and I speak personally, that we all understand that we’re coming along and doing well with this COVID-19 virus. Now, we’re at 2021. People need to get vaccinated. This is my message. I cannot speak for council. I am not speaking for council. I think people should get vaccinated. If you are vaccinated and you are the recipient of someone who has not been vaccinated and you get the Delta from them, if you’re vaccinated, you’re not going to be that well. You’re not going to be that unwell. I mean, you’re going to be okay. It’s not a good idea, and I’m just, I’m speaking personally, and I’ve really never done this in my almost six years as mayor. So, that’s really all I have to say tonight, frankly. Get vaccinated. I think it’s the only way we’re going to move through this, to keep all of our children and our parents and everyone safe. So, please, think about it. It’s not a political thing. It’s just about health and safety. So, that’s really all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moving on to our city administrator, Michael Rogers. Do you go ahead with your report, please?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I just want to give everyone a Capitol Projects update. Butler Parkway Improvement Project. This project started in June 2021. The scope of work was to install a sidewalk along the east side of Butler from Morris Avenue to River Road, install and repair curbing, upgrade drainage structures, and mill and pave the entire length of Butler Parkway. Mostly, all major work is complete. However, there is a punch list of remaining items to complete the entire project, which includes two speed tables to be installed, one at Canoe Burke Place and the other at Hartley Road. Locust Drive Improvement Project. This project started in June 2021. The scope of work was to replace damaged concrete curbs and driveway aprons, construct new ADA ramps, and mill and pave Locusts from Morris Avenue to Tulip Street. All concrete work was completed by SNL Contractors, and the city’s DPW road crew just completed paving the entire road this week. Manor Hill Road Improvement Project. This project started in early August 2021. The scope of work was to mill and pave the entire road, and by mid-August, the city’s DPW road crew completed the entire project. And finally, the Investors Track Resurfacing Project, started in mid-July and was recently completed. In addition to a new surface and striping, the city also added a new triple-jump runway and pit and a new pole vault pit. And that’s all I have as part of my report tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And now, for the council president’s report. I have a few items. First is, the first common council listening section on Zoom has been scheduled for Monday, September 27, and it’s from 7:30 to 8:30 p.m. If you would like to participate, it’s an opportunity to ask questions in an informal setting, and there’ll be, the mayor will be participating, as well as three council members. And the entire council will not be able to participate in order to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. So, keep an eye out as we get closer to the date. The Zoom link will be on the city’s website. The DeForest Avenue parking lots. You may have noticed that the entrance and exit gates to the DeForest lots have been removed. The biggest change is that payment is now required when parking a vehicle in the lot. And you may make the payment at the newly-installed kiosks or by using the Park Mobile app. If you use the Park Mobile app, you will be charged a $0.25 service fee. If you use the kiosk, you will not be. If you want, the first free hour, first hour of parking every day is free, but you must enter your information either into the kiosk or into Park Mobile app. You can’t just get there and walk away and expect an hour later that you won’t have a ticket. So, be sure to, you know, to enter your time when you get there, one way or the other. And, let’s see. If you’re paying by cash at the kiosk, it accepts bills. It won’t accept, if you put a $5 bill in for $2 parking, you won’t get $3 back. So, you know, either credit card singles or, and no coins are accepted. So, that’s basically the story. With that, the five-hour time limit will be enforced, and we will be ticketing now. So, you know, please, please use the lots for what they’re intended for, which is shopping and making use of our businesses and not, you know, not using them. If you’re working downtown, they’re employee lots, so I urge everyone to park in the lots where you should be parking. And finally, the temporary dog park. So, we’ve had a temporary dog park at the municipal transfer station for the past few Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays. It seems to be well-used, and people are enjoying it. So, this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday are the final days that have been approved. Tonight, council will be considering a resolution from the floor to approve additional dates for the dog park. So, stay tuned for that. And with that, I will move on to our, yes, to our, to our resolution, Safety and Health, to appoint a police officer. Council Member Hairston.
Thank you, Council President Fox. I’m pleased to introduce Ordinance ID 8053 to appoint one new police officer, which we discussed at our closed session. A vacancy for this position was previously declared on May 4 during a regular meeting of common council and so adopted. And I am pleased to announce that Theo Richards, who currently serves as a sworn officer with the Highland Park Police Department, has met all of the requirements for this appointment as per our city ordinance, and having successfully completed the background investigation and all psychological, medical, and drug screening exams as required. So, I am pleased to introduce the Resolution ID 8053.
I enthusiastically second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome. And now, it’s time for our swearing-in. Swearing’s in. Madam Mayor?
So, I’m going to start with Babatunde Lawal. Officer Babatunde Lawal grew up in Newark. Graduating from Malcolm X Shabazz High School, prior to his career in law enforcement, Officer Lawal was employed with the Elizabeth Parking Authority for eight years. Officer Lawal was hired by the Union County Sheriff’s Office in 2016, where he attended the John H. Stamlar Police Academy, graduating number 115, sorry. While with the Union County Sheriff’s Office, Officer Lawal worked the Street Crimes Unit Joint Task Force alongside the Elizabeth Police Department. Officer Lawal received his method of instruction and physical training certification, where he has been an instructor with the John H. Stamlar Police Academy, preparing and training the new recruits for their future careers in law enforcement. Officer Lawal is very passionate about sports and is an avid football, basketball, and soccer fan, and when he is not working, he enjoys spending time with his family and friends. I had the great good fortune, along with the members of the Safety Committee, to interview Officer Lawal, and it was our great pleasure to be able to offer you this position. So, please come forward, and we can do the swearing-in. I, Babatunde Lawal.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
I will support the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the position of police officer, according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Mayor, can we have you put on a microphone? Thanks. Go into this. There you go. Okay. Does well? Officer Theo Richards was born in Nassau, Bahamas. He moved to the United States when he was 12-years-old. Officer Richards attended the University of Massachusetts Online, where he was majoring in criminal justice. Prior to career in law enforcement, Officer Richards worked as a financial analyst for BMW North America as a senior customs and compliance analyst, working alongside the government for foreign and domestic trade. Officer Richards graduated the Essex County Police Academy in 2016, where he was the squad leader for his class. He started his career with the Essex County Sheriff’s Office as a Class II Deputy Sheriff Officer. In 2019, Officer Richards transferred to the East Orange Police Department and subsequently attended the Ocean County Police Department to obtain his full basic police certification. In 2020, Officer Richards transferred to the Highland Park Police Department. There, he served as treasurer for PBA Local Number 64. Officer Theo Richards is a first-generation police officer in his family and will serve as the first Bahamian police officer with the Summit Police Department. Officer Richards enjoys swimming, golfing, trying new restaurants, and vacationing with his family. He is married with two sons. When not working, Officer Richards and his wife spend their time raising money for cancer research by participating in 50- to 100-mile bike rides for Pelotonia in Columbus, Ohio. I didn’t know that. And I only kind of smiled about the restaurants because my son’s in the restaurant business. Congratulations. I, Theo Richards.
I, Theo Richards.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
And to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the position.
Of the position.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Okay, now, we are, congratulations to both officers. We’re now moving on to recognition of two of our officers who were, who were voted in and never officially got the swearing-in because of COVID in 2020. So, do you want to do one at a time? Or are you doing them both together, Mayor?
No.
Okay, so Officer Billy Graham and Adam Uannis, if you could please step up, and families too for this?
No.
Nope? Okay, just the officers. Okay.
So, as Council President stated, Officer Graham and Officer Uannis were hired in February of 2000, and at that time, right before COVID hit, unfortunately, neither officer got an opportunity to stand before common council and the public to be officially sworn into their positions. They did, however, receive official swearing-in in private in the chief’s office at that time, but we only felt it fitting at this time to publicly recognize your onboarding with the Summit Police Department and your lifelong commitment to the city, and we thank you very much for being here. And the mayor and I want to present you with these certificates of appreciation for doing so.
First, Ello Graham. Thank you very much. You have been with us since 20th day of February. It’s been very complicated, obviously, with COVID. I’ve seen you around town and in the city hall many, many times. You’re so grateful to have your service here on us. It’s community that we all, sorry, that we all value, not just members of council, but everyone who works in Summit, actually really works hard and values it. And I really appreciate you. Thank you very much. Adam, thank you as well. Obviously, you guys were both hired and sworn in the same day. We did this, but it was very quiet because we were in this crazy COVID world. You have done so much to help our community in the last year, and I am incredibly grateful for the hard work that you both put in, and it’s unrecognized. And so, I’m very glad to have this opportunity. I’m sorry we did not have the opportunity to have swearing-in like we just did, but it’s important that you know, you’re truly recognized, and I’m grateful and value what you do. Make sure to smile. When you smile, they can still see through your eyes. Perfect. Thank you so much.
So, welcome to all our new and not-so-new officers, and we’re glad that you were able to come and join us tonight. I’m going to now ask that we take just a brief break, because I know there are a lot of people here with families and kids who might want to get home on this stormy night. So, this is now the time, anyone who wants to make an exit, this is a great time to do so. You’re welcome to stay, but I understand if it’s a school night. So, we’ll give you a couple of minutes, and I think the chief wanted to do a couple of pictures, and then we’ll get started again. Okay, we’re going to call the meeting back to order now? Okay, so our next item is recognition of John Irons for the sunflowers. Madam Mayor? Mr. Irons, are you, if you’re here, come on up.
Sorry.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, I’m proud. I’m not going.
You don’t want to go? Yeah, maybe it’ll let up before this is over.
The rain still.
I’ll still be here when you’re done.
Do the sunflowers stand up for me?
I hope so. We’ll see if they’re still there tomorrow.
So, we’ll thank you. This is an unusual thing for me to do, because many people in the community do things in groups or community organizations or committees, and for one human being, one resident, to just go out and do something on their own and not look for recognition is pretty cool.
Thank you.
So, I’m very thankful for you.
Thank you.
What you’ve done. I’d like to read a little bit about what this certificate says.
Okay.
And then, and we don’t know each other, so.
We do now.
And we do. In recognition of your contribution of beautifying the city of Summit’s downtown by planting sunflowers along the alleyway and River Park in memory of Cheryl Barbara.
Mm-hmm.
Went.
Yep.
Maybe she’s listening.
She might be.
You have now raised the bar of Summit’s downtown by purchasing over 4,000 seeds, planting and maintaining each one, while using environmentally safe fertilizer. The sunflower has also contributed to Summit Public Arts interactive mural, What Lifts You, by Kelsey Montag. May the sunflowers spread peace, love, and some big smiles, and that is the essence of Cheryl, as she is smiling down on all of us from this, her place in the universe. I am very grateful to you on behalf of council and the entire city of Summit. Thank you for this lovely gesture. It was so, I don’t know what to say, so wonderful and generous of you with your time and your treasure, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1573.71][1573.71](applause)
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I’m honored and humbled, and my thanks to you and the council.
Everything you’ve done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you again next year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, moving on to the main business of the meeting, we’ve got the public comment period now. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public on issues that are not topics on tonight’s business agenda. If you have a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their time to three minutes. And if, when you step up, please state your name and your address for the record. So, public comment period is over. Come on up. Mr. Weck.
Bob Weck, 63 River Road. Hope everyone had a relaxing summer break, and I wish our newest officers all the best. Given the weather, I think it’s a perfect time for the hybrid question. So, I had two. So, it’s been several months since residents have inquired about the hybrid meetings, and we’ve been told that the Summit Technology Committee is looking into it. I’d like to just inquire if the chairperson of that committee will be giving a report on what they’ve tried to do, what’s worked, what hasn’t worked, and the progress. And then, the second question is, just does this council want hybrid meetings and to have, the residents have an opportunity to give feedback on a weather, you know, a night like today with, tonight with weather, where they couldn’t come out and they can still be part of the process? Thank you.
Thank you. So, I didn’t mention before, but we’re going to take all the comments and then respond to them all at once. So, if there are any other comments, come on up. Hello, Mr. Miniger.
Andy Miniger, M-I-N-E-G-A-R, 15 Edgar Street. So, now that it’s been a little while since those gates were taken down at the DeForest lots, I wanted to know if Parking Services has provided any information to the council or to the city on any complaints, how the kiosks are being used, or how the Park Mobiles being used for that parking section?
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from members of the public?
I am new to this, so please be gentle.
Of course.
My name is Mark Kohler, K-O-H-L-E-R, like the toilet. I live at 13 Russell Place. My wife and I actually moved to town here four years ago this week. I am here tonight to discuss the crosswalk at the intersection of Morris Avenue and Morris Court, right outside the Summit Community Center. As you know, the community center has been a gathering spot for senior citizens, for young campers in summertime, recreational sports teams, little leaguers, and most recently, thousands of people coming for COVID injections and who will soon be coming back for boosters. This is a very high-traffic area with people coming and going in vehicles and on foot. Crossing Morris Avenue here can be hazardous to children, seniors, and just about anyone. Crossing Morris Avenue here can be hazardous to children, seniors, and just about anyone. I know this firsthand because my two-year-old son attends preschool directly across the street at the Learning Circle. Every day, weather permitting, my wife and I walk with our son in his stroller for two blocks from our home to the Learning Circle. Each and every day, my heart races as we approach the crosswalk at Morris Avenue and Morris Court. We always say, will drivers see the sign that there's a crosswalk ahead? Will any of them bother stopping for us today? Will they speed even more to make it through traffic lights at Ashwood Avenue and Briscoe Myers Strip up ahead? I can't tell you how many times we stood at the side of the road watching cars go whizzing by, waiting for someone to see us and stop. Even then, as we get halfway across the street, drivers moving in the other direction sometimes just keep going and just kind of swerve around us and do not stop at that crosswalk. Believe it or not, when cars do stop, it can even be more dangerous. On June 1st of this year, a woman kindly stopped and waved us to go across. As we started walking, a man in a large SUV crossed the double yellow line, went around her to pass, stepped on the gas, speeding to go around, and nearly hit my wife and son. He stopped just short of hitting them, and as we both yelled at him, "What the heck," not our words, "are you doing?", he shouted back, "I effing stopped!", before he gave us the finger and sped off again. Yes, he did stop on the wrong side of the road after very nearly hitting my family. I'm here today to implore you to do everything in your power to have flashing lights installed at this crosswalk on Morris Avenue by Morris Court, right in front of the community center, a centerpiece for our community. Soon it'll be getting dark earlier, and that'll make it even more difficult for pedestrians to cross this road. I know this issue is already being addressed by the Safety Committee, but I wanted to be here to lend my voice to this effort, to do whatever needs to be done to get the city and county approval for flashing lights, and to stress the urgency of the need to act now before there's a tragic accident at this intersection. Thank you all for listening and for swimming out here tonight, and everyone getting your boats hopefully, and go home soon.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Good evening, Mr. Fosgate.
Good evening, Council President, thank you, David Fosgate, 32 Laurel Avenue. Just wanted to understand the next steps in process now that the gas-powered leaf blower pilot program ban has ended as of yesterday, what the timetable might be for either a permanent ban or a year-long ban, or just what we envision, knowing as the public or finding out as residents, what will be happening forthcoming, and if anything, you all may not have a plan or vision for next steps or the timeline on that, but there are people like myself who are curious to know.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the public?
Get all the candidates out of the way for you.
Thank you, Mr. Spur.
Steve Spur, 61 Woodland Avenue. My question is about Broad Street West redevelopment, and how the, what was shared on the May 20th meeting, the schedule, I think it was proposed, it was a qualified schedule, around further public engagement benchmarks over the next six months or so, has shifted. It's September 1st, there was anticipated to be, to my understanding, a public meeting around Sub District 1 and pilots, and I think that has changed, I understand from council member and I do, that Sub District 3 is now the priority, so I think that, you know, that information is out of date, and any updates you can provide tonight would be helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm going to close the comment period here, and I'm going to turn it over to our clerk for, to read the other comments, and then we'll address them all at once. A lot of them overlap, so it makes some sense to do it this way.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
So we have one, one comment from Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. On May 28th, there was a statement that said council had asked the Technology Advisory Committee to make recommendations for technology upgrades that will mesh the Zoom technology with HTTV broadcasts and the city's YouTube channel. Can the council provide an update on what the tech advisory committee's recommendations were, and what the specific plan and timeline are to allow virtual participation in council meetings moving forward? If this is not on the immediate roadmap of council and tech advisory committee, can you please let us know why? And an email from Linda Walker, 15 Russell Place. I am a resident of Summit at 15 Russell Place for 50 years.
That one actually, sorry to interrupt, that one goes with the Destryam Bridge, it's not a public comment, it's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's an item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Sure, sorry to interrupt.
It's okay. I will go to, okay. We have an email from Ann Merritt. Hello, the ban on, sorry, her address is 61 Hobart Avenue. The ban on gas leaf blowers this summer has been life-changing, it has re, it has markedly improved my quality of life and that of my family. It's created by the constant and oftentimes unnecessary use of blowers that can be enormously nerve-wracking, I am also happy to know of the benefits of this ban on our environment. It is my hope that this ban will become a year-round policy in Summit. An email from Nellie Trangucci, 125 Hillcrest Avenue.
Neil.
Oh, sorry, Neil. A dog park in Summit has proven to be a wonderful idea. I have been there each day at the temporary park, and has, that has been open, it is extremely popular. Absent a permanent dog park, Summit dog owners, and there are many, will have to go back to driving 20 minutes to South Mountain Reservation or Echo Lake Park to get off-leash exercise for their dogs. It's an amazing community that Summit lacks a dog park, I hope we make a permanent feature. An email from Valerie Davidkova of Ford Beach Spring Drive. I'm a resident of Summit and a dog owner, I would like to strongly encourage that you please consider opening a dog park in Summit, there are many dog owners in Summit who are responsible residents and love their dogs. However, they have to spend many hours of the month driving to dog parks that are miles away, so our dogs can get exercised and stay healthy. I would be very grateful to council of our beautiful city of Summit if they establish a dog park in the city in a convenient and safe location. And an email from Ryan Felment of 57 Madison Avenue. He requested an update on hybrid meetings. He also had several questions regarding the downtown redevelopment. Is there a dedicated communications initiative around BSW redevelopment? If not, will there be one, and what will it look like? Question number two, will there be an advisory board, social media campaign, or other public-facing body that can provide updates to the general public regarding progress, negotiations, and approvals? Does the council, does the council believe the city is reaching out enough to Summit residents? Question three, what parts of BSW are finalized, and what is still being negotiated? Is the sale of the land the only negotiation taking place? If not, what else is being negotiated? Next question, is it 100% finalized that the city?
That one's on the bond ordinance, we're not, that last, oh, I'm sorry.
Pilot, sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
It's a long set of questions.
Is it 100% finalized that the city is using the pilot format for the plan? Okay, oh, one more. And, once the sale of the land is completed to the developers, will the city have the ability to materially change the proposal or such items, such as the amount of residential units, stores, parking deck, non-negotiable at this point? If the city will have the ability to potentially change the updated plans to represent the current needs and requests from others, including the public, what opportunities will the public have to provide feedback? How will it be collected, aggregated, and documented? How is council viewing this going forward? For the last email that we received, it is from Wolfgang Gunther from 11 Fernwood Road. I would like to offer some thoughts regarding gas-powered leaf blower ban, I was happy when it passed because I was hoping it would mean less noise coming from landscapers, however, it's seeming that the ban is not workable. There's a number of landscapers operating that are either ignoring the ordinance or somehow managed to score an exemption. The fact that gas-powered leaf blowers continue to be audible every day except Sunday also lets me to believe not enough is done by the city's administration to enforce it. I admit that I had called to report these landscapers, I even had an altercation with one of them. If that ban was to be put into place again next year, which I hope it will be, I would urge not only to ban all gas-powered leaf blowers, but also offering no loopholes such as exemptions. Either there is a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, or there is not.
Okay, so that's it for the public comments, thank you. So I'm now going to declare the public comment period closed, I'm going to attempt to address all of these issues and address, and direct them to the members of the city staff where appropriate. The parking, I noticed that we don't have Director McNanny here tonight, so the question that Mr. Miniger had on parking might have to wait unless council member O'Sullivan has something to say on that matter.
We can wait, because there are, it's a fluid situation still.
It's pretty early, but just a couple days, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Miniger will, will report on that at the next meeting. Let's see, Mr. Kohler had a question about Morris Avenue and Morris Court, the crosswalk, I understand that's with Safety Committee, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is there anything further to report, or it's being looked at?
Yeah, I can add a little bit.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Yes, it is with Safety Committee, and with engineering as well.
Okay.
We have grant funding that's available for this type of work, and we just have, because Morris Avenue is a county road, we have to coordinate with the county to get that approvals done. And then the other challenge that we're dealing with, like the rest of our world, is material shortages and delays in getting material. So even once a project like this is authorized, it's going to take some time to get the material and the actual components to put this all together, but it is, it is actively working for that area.
And it, it does meet the engineering criteria, and.
Yes.
So it's really just a matter of county approval.
County approval, and then.
And getting the, getting the actual beacon thing.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for the update. Okay, and moving on, we've got several questions from Mr. Weck, Ms. Kramer, and Mr. Felment about the hybrid meetings. We, the Technology Advisory Committee was going to be reviewing proposals that we had, we'd put out a request for proposals, we did not get, we got one proposal, but what we've learned since is that we did have a whole process, and people came in and took a look at our system, spoke to our, our technology folks, but I think, you know, it's, it's like trying to renovate a little bathroom when everyone else is doing a big house renovation, no one wants a job of that size. So, we are looking, and today we have, we, our, our system is 15-plus years old, it's made up of a bunch of components that are manufactured by different manufacturers, there isn't technical support that continues for many of these pieces, and our deputy clerk has spent most of the day dealing with our technology problems when the, the sound system went down today. So we're realizing that what we really need to do is get, is get a proposal to do a complete overhaul of our, of our sound system and our system in this council chamber. So it's unfortunately going to be a longer process, a process that involves getting, making sure there's money in the capital budget, this is something that, it's 15-plus years old, and it's time that we deal with it. So unfortunately, we don't have anything short-term to do, this system that we have cannot really, we cannot add more things onto a system like this, it's just not possible to do it and still have a, have a productive meeting that everyone, where we can conduct business and everyone can hear everyone else, so that's where we are with that. Council member and I do, did you have anything else to add, or?
Sure, so let me just make sure that, you obviously, Council President, outlined, I think, the, the basic issues that are involved. First, as, as Ms. Kramer points out, this issue really didn't come up seven months ago, it's really an issue that came up once we had hybrid, when we decided to go back in person, so that would be sometime, we went back in the first meeting of June, so it's not been something that's been hanging around for seven months, so I just want to correct the record with that. But more importantly, the process, so Technology Advisory Committee, as the council president said, we consulted with them, their position was, give us proposals, we'll evaluate the proposals for you, but we can't give you necessarily exactly what to do, because this is hardware that needs to be fixed in this building. But we also have to recognize that there is the fact that this is a business meeting and a legal meeting, and we had a meeting, and I'm not going to go into the specifics because we had legal advice at that meeting, but the chair of the zoning board, Steve Spur was there, the chair of the planning board, Bill Anderson was there, I was there, the council president was there, my colleague Lisa Allen was there, the chair of the Environmental Commission was there, we had legal counsel, and we had IT folks there. The purpose of that meeting as an overall was to discuss the practicality of how the hybrid meeting could happen, how the operationally people who are chairs of different boards that have different legal standards by which they need to work could do so, and to apply those. But the bottom line is that ultimately, even if folks wanted to do it right now, our system is basically a system 15 years ago that was put together for the purposes that you see here today, which is essentially to have people in chamber attached to HTTV, that's basically what's designed to do. If we have meetings that are hybrid and that are noticed as hybrid, then we have to make sure that everyone who is participating through the medium of hybrid and being on a video has to be able to be seen and to be heard, as well as to make sure the people that are in the chambers are seen and heard. Legally, if we end up in a situation where the system fails anywhere along the process of that meeting, we would need to stop the meeting, because we've noticed it as being available to them in that format, so it could be the first 15 minutes or the last 10 minutes of a meeting. That is a risk that we would have to run in each meeting based upon our current system, and as we've seen now on multiple occasions in this chamber, our system is really not functioning that great. So, I think where we are left, and I think this is the other thing that the council president made, and I want to emphasize this, the city clerk brought in vendors into this chamber, they brought in the, our IT specialist into the chamber, those vendors went around, looked at our equipment, looked at our setup, and then we asked them and anyone else to make a proposal for how they could improve on it in order to be able to do the hybrid format. We got zero proposals after we put out that RFP, zero. The one that council president's referring to was even before that, someone made basically a cost estimate without doing all of that work, but they made a cost estimate, but that was a pretty significant cost estimate, to be honest. But what I'm trying to say here is, I don't want anyone to get the misimpression that we haven't taken this seriously and that we haven't done our diligence. This has gone on from June till September, we're sitting here essentially. In that point in time, we've engaged the Technology Advisory Committee, we've engaged our IT, we've had multiple administrative committee meetings on it, we have had multiple discussions with legal counsel on it, we've had a discussion with chairs of different commit, boards on it. So, I don't want anyone walking out of here saying, or is council being serious or not being serious about a hybrid meeting? I think we're being very clear that we're being serious, but what we also have is a legal meeting that needs to be performed, otherwise, if we get five minutes into a meeting and we have to cancel it, that means no resolution gets passed, no ordinances get passed. That is not a proper way of doing things in this community. Maybe other communities want to risk it, I don't think in this community will accept the idea that people can just willy-nilly go ahead and close meetings because we didn't do our diligence, I think people will be very frustrated if they find that out. That's my position on it, that we need to. That's my position on it, that we need to take, we've taken this seriously, we will continue to do, take this seriously. But the way we operate, and I think the way we should operate, is that this community expects a high standard from those who serve here to make sure we're doing everything to ensure that we have a proper business meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I think that covers hybrid meetings unless, I don't think anyone else has anything to add on that one. So we'll move on. As far as the leaf blower ban, it just ended yesterday. We will be treating this the way we treat every other council item that we work on. It will be reviewed by the Capital Projects Committee and they will debrief city staff and, you know, find out how the program went. There'll be an opportunity for public comment. There is not an intention to do anything this fall. The next time, if we were to do this again, it would be next summer. So we have plenty of time to go through the process and we are, at this point, don't have anything to report as it just ended yesterday. And today was not, obviously, a leaf blower day. So with that, there were some questions on Broad Street West. The, let's see, there, Mr. Spur had mentioned Sub District One. I'm not sure what he was referring to because Sub District One is not something we're discussing right now. That's the district that includes the post office. We are waiting to figure out what's going on with the post office before we move forward with any of that. The presentation that we had in May talked about the different districts just to educate people, but really we are focusing on Sub District Three and that's what you can expect to see information about in the next couple of months, you know, probably in the next month. I think we're looking sort of end of September, beginning of October.
I would think October would be the earliest.
Yeah, right. So anyway, we are negotiating on, with the redevelopers about Sub District Three only at this time. Nothing is set in stone, nothing has been decided. There will be an opportunity, once we have something to present, we will be coming back to the public for another opportunity to discuss it. Mr. Feldman had asked about what other, you know, communication and had implied that there was not public input in this process. I just want to review very quickly. City's website has a whole page with documents, presentations going back to 2017. 2016, we did the Broad Street, we did the master plan reexam and that's where people told us the things they wanted to see in that area, including, you know, more housing, a walkable downtown, that area to be developed with housing, with a grocery store, with some other amenities. So that's sort of the beginning of this. That was a very extensive public process in 2016. 2017, we had the preliminary investigation, which was when we, the council declared the area in need of redevelopment. That was at the end of 2017. Then in March through May of 2018, there were, there was a public meeting as well as multiple stakeholders' meetings and citywide surveys and a table at the train station, a meeting with property owners in the area and downtown property owners. So that was, and that was, so that was the first time that we gathered information particularly about this. There was then a February, meeting in February 2019, another public meeting. Then we had a public hearing in May of 2019 to adopt the redevelopment plan. So at all these times, there was a lot of public input. You know, then at that point, we designated a redeveloper, then COVID hit, things slowed down a little bit. But we did have a virtual meeting in May 2021. And so, I mean, I would say that we've had an extensive public process with a lot of opportunities for comment and there will continue to be. So I want to reassure people of that. And let's see, there, the other question Mr. Feldman had is if there's a communications initiative, and yes, there is. We have, first of all, the city website, we have information. We also have, our communications office puts out all kinds of information about this and we will have another meeting when, you know, when we have negotiated something and we are able to bring it forward. At this point, there have not been decisions on pilots, on the, you know, nothing on land acquisition, any of those things. Those are all being negotiated at this time. And the issues with things like the parking deck and the supermarket are not going to be decided in this round of negotiations. So I think I've covered everything that was asked in those questions. And did I miss anything else, Madam Clerk? If you can see. Okay. And the dog park, we had two comments on the dog park. We will be having a resolution from the floor to address the dog park. So with that, I think we're ready to move on to our ordinances for hearing. So Madam Clerk, could you read the first finance ordinance?
ID number 8,000, bond ordinance providing for the construction of a new firehouse in and by the city of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $16,100,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $15,330,000 bonds or notes of the city for financing such appropriation.
Okay. Councilmember Harton.
Thank you, Council President. This is the bond ordinance for the new firehouse project. This ordinance appropriates $16,100,000 and authorizes the issuance of bonds in the amount of $15,330,000 to finance this project. I would like to speak about three things. First, reminder of why we are doing this. The current firehouse has been in constant operation for 100 years. It leaks when it rains, it lacks adequate space for equipment and training, and it is no longer suitable to meet the standards of a modern fire department. We need a new one and we need it right now. Second, a reminder on process. I'll be moving in just a moment to open the hearing on this ordinance. We will have that hearing and then vote on approval of this ordinance later this evening. Then at the next meeting, we will vote on approval of the bid. Then hopefully, construction will begin in October. The new firehouse will be relocated to the other side of Broad Street between the Salerno-Dwayne and the parking garage. Then, of course, this will create the opportunity to begin redevelopment on Broad Street West. And through the long-term lease or sale of the land and the additional, and the addition of new tax ratables, we can offset part of the cost of the firehouse project. And third, my sincere thanks to Chief Evers and the team of professionals in the Fire Department for all of his work on this over the years, from making the case several years ago to working through every single square foot of the plans. We should be thankful, knowing that this is the building we need for today and the building we need for tomorrow. I encourage my esteemed colleagues to support this ordinance. Now I move to open the hearing. Thank you.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Nidu.
Thank you, Council President. So voting for funding a new fire station is not a once-in-a-generation approval, but given that our current fire station has lasted over 100 years, it is once-in-a-multi-generation approval. Over the years, Republican and Democratic colleagues on this dais have repeatedly made persuasive cases for why we need a new station. I did not disagree with the merits of their position. However, my issue has always been about financing. The fire chief knows that since my first meeting with him, I've always held the same position. Today, I can vote for this ordinance because I think we have moved sufficiently towards, forward with the redevelopment process that I have some idea where we are going with Sub District Three financing. Can we share all of those details with the public right now? In my opinion, the answer is no because we're still in negotiation. However, as I've already published, there are two components, a payment for the land component and a property tax or a payment in lieu of taxes component. Even if the land value is not equal to the fire station cost, it will go a long way towards it. And with a portion of the property taxes or the pilot payments used to pay debt servicing, it will mean that the fire station can be fully paid with money still going towards the city's coffers. So some could say, why not wait till those numbers are released and the deal is closed with the developer? I think that if we wait further, we're all likely going to see an increase in the project costs. Raw material costs and labor costs have gone up since we last looked at these numbers. And if we need to have the contractors issue new proposals, since their bids are time-limited, we're going to get a new set of numbers. Finally, someone could ask if the cost of this project could be lower. A few years ago, well, first of all, various safety committees have been looking at both the budget as well as the scale of this project. But a few years ago, we had two council members, Councilwoman, Council President Fox now, and then I believe Councilman McTirnen, who was then on council, worked with the Fire Department and its consultants to look at what we were going to get and what the costs were and what efficiencies could be made. So I'm not sure, sitting here today, what else could be done to reduce further the scale of the project and to achieve the results that we need for a fire station or achieve additional cost savings. So even though the size of the number makes me gulp, and I'll be honest, it makes me gulp every time I see it, as I said, this is a once-in-a-multi-generation vote. I think we, many of our former colleagues, the fire chief, the members of his department, the city administrator, have worked very, very hard to make sure this project is done right. And I think we have gotten there as reasonably as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nidu. Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I can only just echo and weigh in as the Safety Chair, having been brought up to speed on what has happened earlier, and echo the thanks of Chief Evers, who has really diligently monitored every aspect of this overseeing the project. We're not trying to be the latest and greatest in the state. However, we are keeping up with the standard that is expected of this community. And we are all just experiencing so many emergencies right now that it gives me great comfort, the care and due diligence that have gone into it, and the scrutiny of every dollar that is being spent. I know that is an important thing to do and we've met that challenge. So I fully support this and thank all the hard work that's gone into this amazing project.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Madam Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yes, just briefly. Look, this is not easy stuff. It's a lot of money. And I understand, David, that you're gulping. We've talked about this for six years. The former Councilman Rubino, I see you in the audience, and you've, we've been part of this conversation as well. This is why we are elected to take these serious steps. And we've done everything we can to make sure that we're making the right decision here. Due diligence, pushing the Fire Department, pushing the administrator to make sure that we're doing the what we can for a building that needs to be built to the best of our ability. And that's what we're going to do. So it's not easy. If it were easy, everyone would do it. But I do think that it's the right thing and I applaud council for having the political will to do what needs to be done here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Council President. Chief Evers, I, you know, sat with you and I appreciate the depth that you've gone through to help me understand, as I came in new, as a new member, in understanding what the cost was and everything that went behind it. You scrutinize the numbers. You've done a wonderful job trying to shave away where you can. One thing that hasn't been recognized here, and I think we've all talked about it, but we have a hospital in town, we have large complexes for, you know, corporations. So I think a 100-year-old building, it's okay if it gets replaced when it's leaky and it's not large enough. And so I, you know, I'll have my eye on the ball too for the redevelopment project. But I think decoupling the firehouse and what needs to get done with that, we can deal with the redevelopment separately because I think this is a project that needs to happen. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay. So I was part of the value engineering process with Chief Evers and his team and former Councilmember McTirnen. And, you know, again, the number makes me, as David said, makes me gulp a little bit too. But this is, there's a reason why it's gone 100 years since we've done this because this is a tough decision to make. But I can say, Councilmember McTirnen and I spent a lot of time talking with Chief Evers and with his team and with the architects and, you know, going through every single item and where could we cut things down and without changing the functionality of the building to make sure that, you know, that this is still a building that will hopefully last another 100 years, so we won't be doing this again for another 100 years. But it was a long and grueling process, but I, you know, I feel very confident that we did every, we looked at every single thing and really did a careful review. So I'm, you know, I'm confident that this is the right decision to make now and this is the right decision for our community. So with that, if there are no other comments, I will close the hearing.
Wait, public? You didn't ask for public comments.
I did. And I didn't get any. And Councilmember Little, you weren't commenting, correct? I guess she's not.
I mean, I just want to echo everything that was said before. I sat on safety and we also, during the year I was on safety, we also went through the same process of going through everything on the plans and making sure that, you know, we had listed every expense in every place that, you know, and evaluated every place we were spending money. So I feel very confident that this is the right path forward for us in the Ford City.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. So with that, I'm going to close this hearing and we will move on to the Safety and Health Ordinance. Madam Clerk?
ID number 8015, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8.7, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Would you like to open this hearing?
Thank you, Council President. I am opening the hearing for the ordinance to amend the code for the traffic section for parking prohibited on Pine Grove Avenue. This resolution has, the city has improved a second, a section of Pine Grove Avenue between Blackburn Road and Ashland Road with curbing sidewalks and new paving. This update has created a shrinking of the road width. It's sufficient enough to create new parking challenges. The roadway was in full operation after the construction process for a short time when the police department began to receive complaints about parking. The Traffic Bureau observed that with parking on one side of the roadway between Manor Hill and Colony Drive, there was a significant sightline problem. Vehicles parked created a one-lane pass with two lanes of opposing traffic. This, along with the sightline issue, created the problem and the police department erected an emergency "no parking anytime" signs in the subject area and it allowed traffic to safely flow from Ashland to Blackburn Road. This new ordinance would prohibit parking on both sides of Pine Grove between Colony Drive and Manor Hill Road, and this will make the area safer. Drive and Manor Hill Road, and this will make the area safer for vehicular traffic in both directions. So I am introducing this ordinance for hearing.
I second.
Okay, the hearing is open. Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. I'm glad you guys are addressing this. I live right near there, and I myself have almost been in a head-on accident going around cars. So thank you for doing this. My only concern is the space, and I mentioned in closed session was the homeowners and making sure that they are aware that, because it is from Pine, I'm sorry, from Manor Hill all the way to Colony, right-ish, and so it's a long stretch of road, so I just want to make sure the homeowners are okay with it, not being able to park in front of their house.
So I know I checked in, and there wasn't any kind of special notification other than the temporary signs that were put up, and I don't know how customary it is for us to notify residents, but I'll ask the police chief if he would address that, please?
To answer your question, Councilwoman Allen, there had been no official notification sent out because this is being done for safety reasons. And even, we wouldn't necessarily have residential input on something that we determined was a safety factor. Because of the crest in that roadway and the way that the road construction was done, that area is presenting a problem for cars traveling up over that crest. So it has to be, even if residents are not comfortable with not parking in front of their house, we couldn't even allow that to happen on a temporary basis because of the sightline issues. That's how critical it was.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions or comments from members of council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing done, I'm going to close this hearing, and we will move on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, could you please read the finance ordinance?
Of course, Council President. Bond ordinance providing for the construction of a new firehouse in and by the city of Summit in the county of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $16,100,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $15,330,000 in bonds or notes of the city for financing such appropriation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is the bond ordinance for the new firehouse project. Having just held a hearing on this a few moments ago, I move to adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so moving on, we have the safety and health ordinance. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8.7, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets.
Second. Oh, sorry. Too early. False start.
Councilmember Hairston, would you like?
At least you know he's going to second.
I'm actually with him. This is so disruptive here in all this form and these emergency alerts. I'm with you on that. But we will properly introduce this ordinance to amend the traffic section. And after having introduced and opened the hearing, I move for this ordinance to be passed.
Now I second.
Okay, so could we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Of course. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
And President Fox?
Yes, so the motion carries. And now we have one ordinance for introduction. Councilmember Little? Oh, we, we've got to have it read. Go ahead.
I'll read it first.
Yes, Madam Clerk is going to read it first. I got excited about the TV screen.
Capital Projects and Community Services, ID number 7995, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Departments Created, Section 2-14, Department of Community Services.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance is to memorialize changes that have occurred over the last few years in the organizational structure of our Department of Community Services. And it includes some changes in language for job responsibilities as well as title changes, and it just reflects the current structure as it is in the Department of Community Services. So I ask that we move to introduce this ordinance tonight.
Second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
And President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. So now we're moving on to resolutions. We have finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 8049. This resolution cancels authorization of funds for sewer utility improvements. This is a good accounting practice of going through the capital improvement projects over the last several years, identifying which used less than the total amount authorized, and canceling surplus funds. This resolution cancels $139,512.22, and this will reduce our outstanding bonds and notes that were authorized but not issued by $114,651.80. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That was an aye, so no opposed. Motion carries. We're on a little delay there. Okay, finance number two, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 8060. This resolution appoints an acting tax collector and a tax collector. They are the same person, and I'll explain why, but first I'll back up. The reason for this resolution is that Juliette Bruguero is retiring from the city of Summit after 17 years. She has done a truly outstanding job when it comes to municipal tax collection. She is essentially the best in the business. In the last 10 years, we've seen an average of 99.43% collection of municipal taxes, which is basically unheard of. We wish Judy an incredibly happy retirement. Luckily, she has been thoroughly training her deputy, Patty Dougherty. As per our closed session discussion, the resolution this evening appoints Patty as the acting tax collector through the end of this year, and then it also appoints Patty as the tax collector for the four-year statutory term beginning January 1st, 2022. Congratulations Judy and Patty, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
I just want to say Judy's been unbelievable, and she's worked so hard, and she's been amazing, and I'm very happy that she's trained Patty so well, and we've got two people that have tremendous integrity doing a very important job in our town.
I agree. And are there any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did we get an aye?
We got an aye for, I was waiting until she caught up.
Okay, yes, okay. So any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so congratulations to Patty and best of luck to Judy. And then we have one last item on finance.
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 8083, and as per our closed session discussion, this resolution declares a vacancy for an account clerk in the finance department. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're now on to capital projects. Councilmember Little?
I'm going to recuse myself, Council President.
Oh, for the first one, yes. Okay, Councilmember Naidoo is leaving because he lives on West End Avenue. So, all right, go ahead, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. This is capital projects number one, this is 8095, and this is to award a bid for the West End new improvement project that is subject to NJ DOT approval. This is a New Jersey Department of Transportation-funded project, and the council did approve this on July 27th. However, in the intervening weeks, the NJ DOT has recently added language that it is required for all funded projects that must be included, as well as a requirement for the mayoral signature on the resolution. So this resolution repeats the previous resolution in all material aspects, but adds this new required language and requirement for the mayoral signature. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
And I second that. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries with one extension, and we're ready for Councilmember Naidoo to come back. You know what? Oh, okay, I think Andy's got it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Miniger. Appreciate it. Okay, so we're now on to capital projects number two. Go ahead, Councilmember Little.
Thank you. Capital projects number two is number 7610, and this is to award the bid for the fall 2021 citywide tree planting. The most bid was received by SJC Lawn Care in an amount of $21,133. This was the same contractor who successfully completed the spring planting, so we are happy to see this awarded to this contractor again. And I ask that we approve this resolution as well.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? So I think this is actually, these are the next 75 trees, so we're doing 150 trees this year.
Total.
Yes, okay, that's terrific. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, capital projects number three, Councilmember Little?
Thank you. Number three is number 8025, and this is to award a bid for the Summit Park Line Pedestrian Bridge. And this bid was awarded to see in a construction in the amount of $585,790 for the installation of a pedestrian bridge that will cross Morris Avenue and as well as installation of access stairs to that bridge. This is part of the overall Park Line construction project that we've been talking about for quite a long time, and the first phase was completed, and this will be the sort of the second phase. This contractor has done work for the city in the past, and I would note that all the funding from this project comes from the Summit Park Line tax account and not from the city taxpayers. So I would ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to applaud the Park Line Foundation for the work they're doing. The Morris Avenue Bridge is a critical component to extending our rail trail, and it has gained much national attention. Recognizing that this is a tricky corner, I think this bridge, constructed well and done well, is going to be an absolute net positive for our community. First and foremost, as a girl from Colorado, I love and enjoy wide-open spaces, and in a time where green space is disappearing from our state, I'm proud to say that we are committed to building a park for the first time in almost 80 years in a developed community. Further, the trail has gained national attention with regards to expanding our commitment to conservancy and safeguarding our green space. Recently, Tom Sexton, the Northeastern Director of the National Rails to Trails Conservancy, toured the Summit Park Line, in which he lauded it as a gold standard of what other towns in New Jersey should be doing with regards to conservancy. Following Tom's visit, RTC is awarding the Park Line Foundation $30,000 in grant money, and officially, Tom quoted that he applauds the work of the Summit Park Line Foundation and that the Summit Common Council and the Summit Common Council to once again bring a section of the dormant and historic Rahway Valley Railroad back to its productive use. "This public-private partnership is an example of local creativity and dedication that can be replicated in many other locations in the state," and that's a quote. So as rail trails gain steam, pun intended, boo. It's worth.
I'm sorry, we didn't laugh.
It's worth noting that Summit has been a pioneer in our state in leading the charge towards a greener community, and I'm happy to support this resolution.
Are there any other comments from Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. I see former Council President Rob Rubino in the audience, and Jay Brinkerhoff, both members of the Park Line Foundation. I'm pretty sure many times they thought that this would, this day would never, never come. I'm pretty sure of that. But I think, you know, we, I've been here for some time, we've gotten a lot of ups and downs, but we got a lot of public participation, and I think they would also be equally surprised as to how smoothly this process has evolved over time, and that after getting the MOU done, that we have gotten to a process that has worked effectively. But I want to congratulate them on the ability to raise such a significant fund of money and being able to, as Councilwoman Little pointed out, already having deposited in the city account and ready to begin. This is, you know, a major, major development in the city of Summit, and congratulations to you guys on all your hard work getting it there.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Any other comments? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. So I also want to applaud the Park Line Foundation largely because I think I count myself among one of the more skeptical people, especially when it came to privacy and safety and the finances. And I think what the Park Line Foundation has done personally for me is checked off a lot of the question marks that I had about the project, especially when it's related to the privacy for the people on Henry and Eggers Court and Russell Place and Ashwood Court and safety. We've got the sign-off of the chiefs. My two questions I have tonight are on timeline. What is the, what is the expected timeframe for installation, and how long will it take? And then the second question is, this is a significant amount of money, so congratulations on raising all of it, but the second part of that question is, to what extent can you share with us what's left to continue the project so that we don't have a bridge to nowhere?
So Director Schreger, can you talk about the timeline for us, please?
Absolutely, through you, Council President. Assuming this is awarded tonight, you're looking at about a month for paperwork to go back and forth, which would be a kickoff in October. You'd be looking at a three-to-six-month construction timeline, but the primary critical path will be the bridge itself, and as was mentioned earlier, it's just the lead time in getting that delivered. So I would think early 2022 it would be wrapped up, so.
And how long will it take in terms of, like, will there be closures on Morris Avenue and for what period of time?
The closures, the design engineer had indicated only about a week of alternating closures for when the actual bridge is erected. Otherwise, there might be some lane shifts and maybe some temporary closures as they do abutment work. So there will be some impacted traffic, but we'll do everything we can to keep it minimized and work with other projects in the area. I know the Italian-American Club might have a project going on as well as the firehouse.
Okay, thank you for that. And I guess as far as funding, I don't know, Dr. Rubino or Mr. Brinkerhoff, if you have anything you can report on, sort of what else? You're free to come up and talk to, talk to us about the project, but also if you have anything you can answer, Councilmember Vartan, as far as the funding issue. Not to put you on the spot or anything.
Oh, we're gonna.
I'm used to it.
Yeah, I think you're as much.
Thank you, through you, Council President, and good evening, members of council, Mayor Rades and city staff. So fortunately, the piggy bank is not empty despite depositing a check for almost $600,000 a couple of weeks ago. We do have additional funding aside for any cost overruns, as well as we're in negotiations with some private donors where the most expensive part of the project is this. So really, all that is left is resurfacing some of the decking over the existing bridges and fencing along the way that's a de minimis amount compared to what's the near $600,000 we're putting out today. So funding is on our end secure, so we think once this is done, we'll have a much more functional Park Line and then doing the rest, especially with the new, the new tenant on the Selgin property, it's going to require less work than we originally thought.
Thank you.
Is it time for public comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
I could just stay here?
As long as you're up here, sure, go ahead.
So I have some brief comments. So I have some brief comments. It's not my birthday, but it sure as hell feels like it today. Back in 2015, when I, as Council President, went to speak to then city administrator Chris Cotter in his benign friendly way, when I asked about the land for the Park Line, he effectively said, "Good luck with the state of New Jersey getting that land." So six years later, I'm quite happy to be here at the point we're about to join those two strips of land and make the Park Line a complete project. Tonight's really about gratitude to all those involved, and personally, it's a little bit of my own contribution to the city that's been so good to me for, since I was 13 years old. Hopefully, this will create a legacy for years to come. The vision of the Park Line was to always connect the downtown to East Summit and to Bryant Park and hopefully points beyond, and with this kind of monumental event, we take a huge step forward for doing that. You know, New York City has its High Line, while Summit, New Jersey's got its Park Line, and I, I think they're both going to be great venues for, for generations. I hope they'll see many Summit families through, through the years, being able to enjoy, enjoy this green ribbon that really connects neighbors, to neighborhoods, and to our parks and our green space. So I'm really looking forward to the future. But as I said, tonight's about gratitude, and I want to thank specifically the Summit Park Line Foundation board members, Jay Brinkerhoff being here tonight while his basement is flooding, still giving his time to the cause, as well as our, our volunteers and supporters and donors throughout the years, and also to common council, and specifically council members, Naidoo, Allen and O'Sullivan, who at times put their gloves on and got down to the ground level to help out with the project. So thank you so much and for your, for your support, as well as Mayor Radus and all the other members of council, as well as the excellent city staff and Aaron, thank you for all your guidance as well. It's, it's really been, we really appreciate the, the care and thoughtfulness that you guys handled this, this project with us. I also want to make a specific thank you to Al and Lucy Lord, who gave an extremely generous gift towards this bridge project when really nobody thought this would get off the ground. And, you know, it's important to, to note, members of the community who, who stand up and show confidence in a project, but not everybody else does. So again, here we are, six years later, almost $1 million private money raised, and I'm glad that hopefully I'll have grandkids one day and be able to enjoy the Park Line as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Rubino.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Are there any other comments from the public on this issue? We have one letter that was written in.
From Ms. Linda Walker, she's a resident of Summit at 15 Russell Place for 15, uh, sorry, 50 years. "I remember when we still had a railroad bridge across Morris Avenue. I am not in favor of building a pedestrian bridge. If built, it must be high enough to accommodate the new taller 18-wheeler trucks which travel through our community. We recently had a truck partially damage the traffic signal and gas station sign at the corner of Broad and Ashwood because of its size. I also remember many years the tremendous traffic jam caused when a tractor-trailer truck became wedged under the railroad bridge on Morris Avenue. I am also not in favor of the bridge because the access and intrusion of pedestrian traffic at an elevated level into our neighborhood. This has the potential for invasion of privacy and mischief as access onto our private property through backyards. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Director Schreger, could you please just address the height issue?
Absolutely. Through you, Council President. The proposed height will be a minimum of 17 feet from the bottom chord of the bridge to the roadway surface. This meets current standards, federal highway as well as the county. Just as a reference, the bridge going to the transfer station is 13 six, so our garbage haulers do clear there, so you're talking an extra three and a half feet. The bridge on Springfield Avenue, the road bridge, it's 10 and a half feet, so this is, you know, six feet and plus higher than that. So, so yes, everything will fit through it. That, that would be on the road will fit through fine.
Okay, and as far as the privacy part of this phase will be also the placement of privacy fencing along Henry Street and, and other assorted places where, where the Park Line travels pretty close to a home.
That's, that's correct. The Park Line Foundation has met with both the Forester and, and Public Works representative to discuss how that will be implemented. That's not in this contract, that'll be done separately through a landscape office. This is a highway contractor that's building a bridge, but that, that's in the works as well.
And the two will be done concurrently, so when the bridge opens, these
Yes.
...security and privacy fencing
Yes.
...will be in place?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much for addressing that. Any other comments from members of the public? And it's from members of council? So, hearing none. This is, you know, if you'd asked me a few years ago if we would be in this place, I would have said no, but I'm, I'm really glad that we've been able to, to come up with an agreement where we could work together and partner to do this, and I think this will be a great addition to the community. And I thank all of the Park Line Foundation folks for their work and for all the council members, and, you know, for the work that they've done also to bring, to make this happen, so.
Yeah, and I thank you for, you know, and I congratulate you for the great good work you've done in raising this money. It's not easy. So we have other projects coming, we'll all be in touch.
Okay, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, you did it. All right, and now moving on, we have one last sort of anticlimactic resolution for... Thank you all.
Actually, I have two, I have one from the floor.
Oh, right, right, right. Absolutely.
The four, the four capital project resolutions, there were seven nine seven seven.
No, no.
I award a bid for the sanitary sewer cleaning and video inspection, which is a project that we do dearly in different sections of the city to make sure that the sewers are scrubbing correctly. This bid is to do the work on courses of Ashland, Memorial Field, Beatbrier, Plymouth, Mountain and Jewett Hill, and it was awarded to Oswald Enterprises in the amount of $5,725. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? So this is something we do regularly, and with a night like this, with this kind of weather, it's probably a good thing that we do because this saves us a lot of money in the long run because it, it's preventative maintenance. It's going in and seeing what's going on in our sewers, which I believe are over 100 years old. So there's, you know, it's how we find problems that need fixing before they become major problems. So I commend the engineering staff for the work that they do on this. This is really an important project and very sort of forward-thinking, so. If no one else has any comments, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and then we have a resolution from the floor, Councilmember Little.
I do, and so hopefully this one is not anticlimactic, because I'm, I'm very happy to introduce this from the floor, and this is a resolution to offer additional dates for the temporary dog park at the transfer station. As you know, at the last meeting, we approved the temporary dog park at the transfer station. It's been, we've had overwhelmingly positive feedback from the residents, and so we have made a request to the county to extend the date. We just received approval on that today, and I'm happy to announce that there will be additional dates of the week four, which is the September 16th through the 18th, week five, September 23rd through the 25th, week six, September 30th through October 2nd, week seven, October 14th through the 16th, week eight, October 21st through the 23rd, week nine, October 28th through the 30th. These are, like, we said that the free market are not open, so it will not conflict, and all the other conditions of the dog park will remain in place. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Council President. As a new dog owner, I want to wholeheartedly endorse and thank the committee and Director Schreger for endeavoring with this dog park. I have gotten so much excitement as I walk my dog three and four times a day and everyone asking, "Have you been there? Have you been there?" And I want to ask if there is an opportunity for the, to collect feedback, because there are tons of ideas that folks are floating around, so I don't know if there's going to be a volunteer committee or some way that folks can share and contribute to the upkeep of the dog park in some way.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Harrison. I think that's probably the discussion that has to be had in the cap committee.
Well, let me just say, I think we're getting a lot of feedback already.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of feedback.
First, first, let's, let's start.
You can always email us.
Yeah, no, first, let's start with, I think almost all of the feedback is positive. The question now is people have suggestions and ideas how to improve it, whether it's in that location, or some people are suggesting they want more neighborhood dog parks in different neighborhoods, and those are all things we're thinking of that we'll need to explore. What are the options where, where it's feasible, where there's land, what the drainage is? There's lots of issues that go into place in order to be able to do what this was done. This was, location was, as, as folks will remember, this was a location suggested by the Transfer Station Task Force when they came up with their report and they looked at what was available, and then we had multiple discussions in the cap committee about looking at issues such as drainage and, you know, impacts to neighborhoods and parking. We had to take all of those different factors into account. But we are, what I'm hearing, what I'm at least seeing and hearing is people like the idea, they like the concept, but they have other suggestions. The mayor has a different perspective than people.
I do, I do. We have, we have a, an email from someone who have, we have 905 dogs licensed in town. We have approximately 6,000 or 7,000 households. So he wants us to poll all the people who own dogs. How about the people that don't own dogs, who don't want dog parks in their neighborhood?
I, I'm, no, 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 no.
I think this is something that needs to be discussed fully at your committee.
I'm not sugge, I, what I said, if I, if I wasn't being clear, I apologize. What I said was, the concept of a dog park by people who have been going there
Yeah.
...have been overwhelmingly in favor of it.
That's true. How about the people that don't have dog parks and don't want them in their neighborhood?
I didn't say that we were putting them there. What I said was, some people have suggested it. I didn't say we were going to do it. I said that...
No, I'm just saying it should be considered.
I think we're aware that there are considerations when you put it in a neighborhood.
Neighborhood, that's what I just, that's what I just said literally.
I think the appeal to, I think we're all saying the same thing.
We agree.
Right, exactly.
The appeal to the transfer station is that it's not in anyone's neighborhood.
Yeah, and that's why I said that we have to look at the parking. When people say, "Let me just put it in," why can't you just put it in a neighborhood? We have to consider other issues
Right.
...rather than simply, is it convenient for people in that neighborhood because it's quite possible that there's not sufficient parking or that the fields are used for different purposes, that you cannot just simply take it out of commission and assign it? That was my point, so I'm sorry if I wasn't being clear.
No, no, I was, I was wrong.
Okay, so, so are there any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? We did have those two comments that you read earlier, because we, people were not familiar with the
With the dog parks.
That it was going to be coming from the floor, so, so those are, we'll just kind of fold them into this discussion, but I think this is terrific. I'm hoping if it ever stops raining to bring my dog to the dog park. And so thank you to the cap committee for your work on this. This is terrific, and we, you know, we'll continue to take input from people, questions about, you know, things. One question that I've gotten a lot of, and I just want to explain, is it's open for transfer station hours, you know, and the reason for that is because we can't have people in the transfer station after hours for liability reasons, and so, you know, that is, that is the one downside to this location, is it does close pretty early, and it's, you know, so the only weekend day is Saturday, but it, you know, nothing is perfect, and there are a lot of good things about this location. So with that, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we have a dog park, and, all right, so we're now moving on. I seem to have lost my place. Should we finish the resolutions? Yeah, okay, so we now have a lawn labor resolution?
Yep.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. Pursuant to our discussion in closed session, I'm introducing Resolution 8052 to authorize the extension of sick leave with pay for an employee in the Department of Community Services from August 19th through August 19th, 2021. We wish this employee a speedy...
I think August 19th to what? You said August 19th twice.
October.
Oh, oh, sorry, it's getting late.
Yeah.
August 19th through October 19th.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We wish this employee a speedy recovery, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Motion carries. All right, and we have one safety and health resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I'm introducing Resolution ID number 8071, which will declare vacancies in the police department. It is with sadness and congratulations that we announced that Sergeant Ron Martin, who has served the city and the police department with distinction for over 29 years, has submitted his application for retirement, and we absolutely wish him well and thank him for his distinguished service. And we are now having two vacancies created by his departure, and we are declaring the vacancies for the police sergeant and for a police officer as a result of an upcoming retirement. So I introduce for this resolution for approval, 8071.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are going to loop back. We had one public comment, it was a part of Ryan Felmit's very lengthy email
Yes.
...about the bond ordinance. There was one question at the bottom that didn't make it into our hearing on the bond ordinance, so Madam Clerk, if you could read it and then we'll answer that.
Thank you. Ron, I just want to make sure if this is okay?
Yeah, you can read it.
Okay, thank you. Ryan Felmit, 57 Madison Avenue. "Will this bonding be calable in case the city has funding and desire to pay down the principal and interest early and retire the bonds? What is the earliest potential call date for the bonds? When will the term sheet of the $55 million bonding be available for the public to view?"
City Administrator Rogers, can I ask you to take that one, please?
So what we would do, the first step to finance the, the bond authorization that was adopted tonight, we would first seek short-term financing, which is a 12-month note. We would, we would go out to finance the, the $15.5 million. In the future, as we do with any other capital project ordinances and, and that are related to bonding, potential bonding, we evaluate the capital markets, the interest rates specifically. With this, we'll do the same over the next year. Rates are very, very low, historically very low, so our note, the notes that we're, short-term rates are well under 1%. The long-term bond market is indicating somewhere under 2%. So we're, we'll do that, there's no set date. We have 12 months from the time we do take out a note to make a decision. Sometimes you go out to, for long-term bonding within a year or with, after that note comes due, or we'll, we'll make that determination at that time. As far as the... As far as the callable option question, typical bond ordinances and issuances will include a, a callable option for the issuer, which would be the municipality. We would, that's determined by bond counsel, underwriting and so forth. No set time, it just depends upon how the, the financing is structured, the length of the bond, and in this case would be a 30-year bond we would seek. So we're, it, it's, it's really undetermined or to be determined for that, for that callable option. But if, if there was, and at that time, there was an opportunity for the municipality to save money with a lower interest rate, we would then call that, that option, and then we would refinance, and that could be an opportunity to potentially pay off some principal at that point. But that could be, you know, 10 years from now, 15 years from now.
Thank you very much. So with that, that answers that question. So now we're going back to the main agenda. We are up to the consent agenda. So at this point, unless anyone from council or the public wants to pull out anything to discuss in the consent agenda, we will take the entire agenda as a whole. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're up to council members, new business or comments? Anyone have anything? Really? Okay, so with that, do I?
Taking on our basements.
Yeah, exactly. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone. Get home safely, okay?
Stay home.